We're now in order for the October 9th to 18th School Board Meeting. Would you stand, please, for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The board is all present this evening except for Director Chuck Lee, who is out of town. There are no agenda modifications this evening. Let's go on and I'll have the superintendent introduce the spotlights.
All right. All right, good evening, everyone. We have some awesome spotlights tonight. Our first spotlight will be presented by Lillian Govis, our Director of Communications. Sorry, Govis. I don't know where that came from.
I'm new here, it's fine.
No, you're not.
We're so excited to recognize our Business Partner of the Month for October 2018, Power Equipment Systems. We have owner Pete Youngker, Vice President David Crane, our Special Programs Employment Specialist Becky Willhite, and our student Scott Taber is here. We'll invite you to come forward with the superintendent now. Our Community Transition Programs are excited to nominate Power Equipment Systems as our Business Partner of the Month. Community Transition Programs work with adult students. Oh, Mom, you have to stay up there, too. Yeah, no, you don't get... No free passes. Community Transition Programs work with adult students with disabilities who have completed high school with a modified diploma, extended diploma, or certificate of attainment. Our Community Transition Programs focus on preparing students to transition into the community as adults through instruction in four key areas: transition skills, functional academics, independent living skills, and vocational training. Power Equipment Systems has been a Community Transitions Program's work site for the past two years. Pete and Kelly Youngker are the owners of Power Equipment Systems. Kelly is a graduate of South Salem High School. Power Equipment Systems is a locally-owned warehouse that ships parts to 12 states. Their main focus is providing small engine parts for lawn mowers, leaf blowers, and chainsaws. Our students, like Scott Taber here with us tonight, learn how to locate the parts in the warehouse and then deliver them to the shipping department. Students start by filling one order at a time and work their way to completing five orders. The orders are batched together in the computer system to make the process very efficient. Everyone at Power Equipment Systems has embraced our Community Transition Programs and supports our students as they learn how to pull parts for shipping. This is a really special recognition because October is Disability Employment Awareness Month, and shortly we'll have a proclamation for Disability Awareness Month. So we would like to thank you, Power Equipment Systems, for giving our students this valuable experience, and congratulations on being recognized as our Business Partner of the Month. We are going to break with our normal tradition, and I understand that Scott has some words that he would like to share with us about his experience working with Power Equipment Systems.
Hi, I'm Scott.
Make sure this is on, Scott.
Hi. Hi, I'm Scott Taber. I'm currently a student at Summit CTP. I would like to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am here to thank PES for the opportunity you have given to other students and myself to work there. I am grateful because I always wanted to work in a warehouse, and PES was the first place that allowed me to come in and work. I am excited to learn as much as I can from this experience and hope PES continues to support our programs and our students. You have a very accepting staff, and I always feel that I am contributing. Thank you, PES.
All right, our next spotlight will be presented by Larry Ramirez, our Director of High Schools.
Have to move this up from Ms. Govis a little bit here. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call Claire Adams to the front, with Principal Tiffin as well. Family, if you'd like to be with her as well. It's a pleasure to recognize a talented high school student who is making a big impact in the community. South Salem senior Claire Adams, who is also a board member of the United Way of the Mid Valley, has started fundraising for a mobile shower unit to help the growing issue of homelessness in Salem. Together with the United Way, Claire hopes to respond to the crisis of unsheltered men, women, and children by fostering tangible solutions that address the unmet needs and gap in our community. The project aims to provide a mobile hygiene unit that allows 20-minute increments of privacy for self-care. Claire says that it's not only about getting the chance to shower, but also the confidence that comes with being and feeling clean. She believes that showering is a simple solution that can help boost confidence, serving as the great first step for people to get back on their feet. United Way looks to engage community nonprofit partners, city administrators, community members, and advocates to ensure the project is successful. Claire's goal is to raise somewhere between $200,000 and $250,000 before springtime. Congratulations, Claire, on all your successes so far. We are excited for you and the many lives that you will be changing. Thank you.
All right, our next spotlight is going to be presented by Matt Beyondi, our Director of Middle School Education. Oh, gosh.
Good evening, everyone. If we could have Denny McCarthy, the principal of Leslie Middle School, John Madlin and his family, and Mihir Joshi and his family all come up, and as well as there may be some other staff that are from those schools, from either Howard Street or Leslie, that could come up as well. Tonight, we are recognizing two very talented middle school students for their achievement in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, otherwise known as STEM. Leslie Middle School eighth grader John Madlin and Howard Street Charter School eighth grader Mihir Joshi were recently named two of the nation's top 30 middle school STEM students, advancing to the 2008 Broadcom Masters Finals in Washington, DC. Broadcom Masters is a program founded and produced by the Society for Science and the Public. This program seeks to inspire young scientists, engineers, and innovators who will solve the grand challenges of the future. We're counting on you guys. From October 19th to the 23rd, John and Mihir will travel to Washington, DC to participate in a rigorous competition that leverages project-based learning to test and demonstrate critical thinking, communication, creativity, and collaboration in each of these STEM areas. John and Mihir were chosen as 30 finalists from 2,800 applicants, competing for $100,000 in scholarship and prize money. They are two of three students to be selected from Oregon and the only students ever to be selected from Salem Kaiser. The finalists will meet with government officials and showcase their work at the National Geographic Society on October 20th. Winners will be named during the award ceremony at Carnegie Institution for Science on October 23rd. Congratulations to John and Mihir for achieving this monumental honor. Salem Kaiser Public Schools is proud to be represented by such bright and talented students. Good luck and have fun in Washington, DC.
Now is the time for public comment for items not on the agenda. On the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak that didn't have the opportunity to sign up? Thank you. No one. Next thing on the agenda for us is action items. And we have four on your agenda for this evening. Two are proclamations, we'll start with that. Ann, would you like to come up? This is Ann Kelly. She'll speak for the adopt the hands and words are not for hurting.
Thank you very, very much for this honor to be here again this year, 21 years in a row, with representatives from our Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project. Pete Teller is going to speak alongside me, and he will begin.
We'd like to present a testimonial this evening in regards to the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project. It's read with full permission of the author, and in fact, the author is Lauren Studer, who is a 2017 graduate of South Salem High School. "Hands and Words from the Mind and Heart of a Student" by Lauren Studer. In kindergarten, I learned a 14-word pledge that would stay with me for the rest of my life. I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others. When I was in the eighth grade, those very words would echo in my head and cause me to not self-harm. In high school, those words would help me come back to reality and see things will get better and that there is always hope. These words have stopped me from harming myself that would deeply hurt those who love me. I wanted to give people a platform to help others like me. My junior year of high school, I began to work with suicide prevention, forming a club that would later be known as Saxon Strong. I wanted to get teenagers to start talking about mental health and suicide prevention. The backbone of this club would come from the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project, through donations of their Purple Hands and Words bracelets, a pledge banner to hang permanently in the school, and funds donated from other community resources. I would learn how to educate people and how to present the mission and message of the Hands and Words Project to several organizations and public officials. What started as a giving out of Hands and Words purple bracelets grew to creating my own design for Saxon Strong purple t-shirts and selling them at lunch, raising money for suicide prevention. A week was dedicated at South Salem High School to this cause. During this week, every home athletics game, our team wore the purple shirts to warm up in their hair to represent the cause. Our team would share purple pre-wrapped with the visiting team to include them in raising awareness. At the football, volleyball, and soccer games, a short speech was given to educate the crowd on why we were wearing purple and then guided everyone in the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting pledge. On Friday of the Awareness Week, the school had a purple out where students and teachers were encouraged to show their support for those who might be feeling alone or might have felt left out in the past. The purple shirt represented that together we are strong and are here for each other at this difficult time in life. We were taught from the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project why the color purple was chosen when taking the 14-word pledge. One reason is to remember and honor everyone or anyone who has been hurt or killed by suicide or murder. The color purple reminds us to never forget those who are no longer with us or those who may be afraid to ask for help, frozen in fear. We are all valuable, irreplaceable human beings. Sharing with my community, the conversation being started at my high school became my biggest goal and a true passion. I was inspired by individuals who would come to the booth during lunch and buy a bracelet thanking me or sharing their story. The purple shirt became a symbol of unity at South Salem High School. During my senior year, I would continue this tradition with the help of my classmate Katie Larson as she served as a Miss Marion Pope County Outstanding Teen. Together, we repeated the Suicide Prevention Awareness Week. This time, we began a partnership with West Salem High School as well. Our schools would band together, selling purple shirts and Hands and Words purple bracelets that would be sported at our football games against each other that year. We volunteered as a club at the first annual Out of the Darkness Suicide Prevention Awareness Walk in downtown Salem and presented at the Salem Kaiser School Board and Superintendent's Board Meeting and the Marion County Commissioners Board Meeting the work that we had been doing. At both board meetings, we accepted the 19th Annual Proclamation for Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Week that year. Our final event was a dance put on by South High after the football game, once again raising awareness and bringing people together.
Continuing with Lauren's message. The reason I did what I did was to help bystanders and peers be more aware and involved and help save lives. It's not enough to just listen. We must do something when someone is crying out for help or showing signs of hurting themselves or potentially others. As a teenager, it's hard to be there for others, especially for such hard topics. It is not our job to be a lifeline or therapist. However, it is on us to get them connected to resources, whether that be a school counselor, parent, or another trusted adult. We must educate people of all ages on what resources are available for people who are facing a variety of problems in order to better support people as a community. Right now, it is too common for individuals to notice but to take no action when someone is seen cutting themselves or dealing with mental health problems because we do not know how to help them. The person going through the mental health issues, be that from a biological or a situational standpoint, often feel alone and disconnected from their peers. These topics are still too taboo in our society. If someone notices and listens to them but does not know the resources to help the individual, then sadness can turn to anger. People switch from feeling alone because they didn't want to reach out to feeling betrayed because they cried out and were ignored. Education is the root of the solution. We must reach individuals who may not be diagnosed yet or are facing extremely difficult situations. We must show our unity as schools, communities, and as a human race. It could be through a purple shirt or a sticker on the window of a business or simply saying the Purple Hands pledge and taking those 14 words to heart. Whenever it is... Excuse me. Whatever it is, we must continue the conversation and implement the simple program into schools from kindergarten all the way through high school and into adult life. Saxon Strong did more than just raise awareness for suicide prevention. We strive to unite students at all times. We did so by bringing students together after several of our peers passed away. We wore our purple shirts and purple bracelets to show support for each other as we grieved. We carried roses for our fallen peers lost to suicide during graduation. We provided a safe place for individuals to talk about mental health, suicide, death, and much more. It was a club that showed that these hard conversations had a home at South Salem High School. This was not something I was asked to do. This was something I wanted to do, and it was only possible through the backing of the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project. The message from their Purple Hands pledge was the centerpiece of this movement in the Salem Kaiser School District. From my work with me, Ann Kelly, I was awarded the Service Over Self Honor at the Salem Rotary Chapter. I was additionally honored at South Salem High School with the Principal's Award and the Crock Award for my service to the school and community. I am one student with a voice and a passion, and this is what the Purple Hands pledge did for me. Can you imagine what it could do for every student in the district, county, state, region, country, or even the world? Continue the conversation with me and Hands and Words by spreading the Purple Hands pledge and stories just like mine. Lauren Studer, South Salem High School, class of 2017, Salem, Oregon. I couldn't be more proud and touched. The student activism, it came from Lauren and from other kids in this district and far beyond who get it, who know that we need something to connect us all and to remind us it's never right to hurt ourselves or each other with words or action. It has been my dream for this entire district to adopt this program with visual reminders, banners, posters, and certainly teaching the pledge and what it means. And I just hope that that can happen. Thank you for being the first district in the nation to take this pledge and keep it going. We just need it everywhere in our district, at all grade and age levels. Thank you very much for your time, and thank Lauren for her courage, compassion, and commitment to saving lives. And she's still doing that. I was just told she was... She just told me she's mentoring the leadership class, and she's a sophomore now at Portland State. That's dedication. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Is there a board member that will agree to read the proclamation? Thank you, Jesse.
Oh, man, I'm so excited. All righty, here we go. Whereas, a world without abuse and violence is a dream we all share. And whereas, we acknowledge that any form of mistreatment of another is abuse. And whereas, abuse can be in the form of verbal, mental, or physical, and often escalates to further violence. And whereas, we believe that all people have the right to live free of abuse and violence. And whereas, we believe that every person can make a difference in stopping abuse and violence by not using violence to control others, by not tolerating any form of abuse from others, and by developing healthy relationships at every age and in all circumstances based on respect and equality. And whereas, we recognize and support the efforts of district staff in our community in promoting respect and equality for all people, teaching conflict resolution behaviors, and helping students learn how to stop abusive cycles. And whereas, we recognize the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project's Purple Hands pledge is an effective tool in abuse and violence prevention education. Now, therefore, the Board of Directors of Salem Kaiser School District 24J proclaims October 14th through 20th, 2018, to be the 21st Annual National Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Week in the Salem Kaiser School District. We call upon our community to observe October 14th through 21st, 2018 as the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Week and encourage everyone in the community to take the Purple Hands pledge. Do you guys want to do it with me? I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others.
Jesse, would you like to make a motion that the board accept this proclamation?
Sure. I move that the Salem Kaiser School Board accept the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting proclamation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, the proclamation is entered into by Jesse and seconded by Marty. Thank you. Is there any discussion on the board? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we will. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have accepted the proclamation. Thank you. We have a second one this evening that is on the agenda, and that is the Proclamation for Disability Awareness Month, which is this month right now. Is there a board member that will be able to read that for us and make a motion?
Disability Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas Salem Kaiser Public Schools celebrates all of our students and their unique abilities, and whereas more than 6,000 students receive special education services in our district, and whereas disability is a natural part of the human experience and in no way diminishes the right of individuals with disabilities to experience rich educational opportunities, and whereas Salem Kaiser educators are committed to empowering students with disabilities, and whereas Salem Kaiser Student Services is dedicated to creating supports for children's with disabilities, their families, and communities, and whereas our community is better because of the diversity of our population, and whereas inclusion is a core value of our district and we honor our children's exceptional abilities, now therefore, the Salem Kaiser School District Board of Directors proclaim October 2018 to be Disability Awareness Month and encourages all members of our community to join in celebrating our students with disabilities. I would move adoption of the proclamation, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Director. Seconded by Paul Kylo. Will all those in favor, please? Is there any more discussion before we go forward? Please raise your hand or signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Nay? We have adopted the proclamation for Disability Awareness Week. Thank you. I'm going to now turn this over. We have two items on the consent calendar. Okay, I'm sorry, I missed two items that we still need to go over. One is the Board Policy, Government's Policy Number 10, Agenda Planning.
This is the second time you've seen this policy, so I believe you'll be ready to entertain a motion.
Yes, I will entertain a motion for approval. We had that a couple of board meetings ago. Marty?
I move that we accept the changes to this policy.
Okay.
Second.
Marty has accepted. Jim Crane has seconded. Those in favor, please signify. Is there more discussion?
Okay. I have a question.
Jesse?
That's fine. So the purpose of doing checking for consensus, what was the reason that we did before and why would we get rid of it?
I don't think we got rid of it, per se. You had it before and...
Yeah, on number four?
Yeah, and the recommendation for the board on September 11th where it was heard before was for item four to be slightly changed. And if you look in your packet, it is in gray on section four. We changed slightly the wording.
Well, it took out the consensus part of it. So we would no longer be checking for consensus, if I'm reading it correctly.
For clarification of content?
Can I comment on that?
You can.
So my understanding is that there was a lot of confusion about the consensus, what it really meant in each meeting, and by removing it, we are just... We're still able to get the report. We're able to ask questions and get all the information we want without the additional confusion of consensus.
We do not have to have consensus. You are right. Please signify. Any other discussion besides Marty and Jesse? Okay, seeing no more discussion. Will someone entertain a motion, please?
There's been a motion, Madam.
Yeah, ready to vote.
If you're in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay votes?
Nay.
Nay.
Seeing two. Well, Jesse and Paul Kylo. Well, see Jessie and Paul Kylo. Voice nay votes. The remaining board was aye and will proceed on. The next action item is Community Bond Oversight Committee, and I'll turn things over to Mike
Good evening, Chair Goss, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. Tonight you have in front of you for action the appointment of the Community Bond Oversight Committee, and wanted to give you just a little bit of background on how you got, how we got to the proposal, the recommendation in front of you. So after the bond is passed, it's time to pull together a community, Community Bond Oversight Committee, and it's basically to take a look at the progress of the, of the bond over time and provide regular reports to the board. Part of it is for transparency and accountability purposes, very similar process to the 2008 bond, very similar to other districts with, with bonds as well. Just to give you a sense of how this committee was put together, we, we really did use an equity focus. The application process was both in English and in Spanish. We distributed through several media channels, our district website, Facebook, Twitter. We have a Monday Minutes which goes out to thousands of community members. We also wanted to make sure that based on the, the application process, that we were looking at anywhere between nine and 12 members. You have 12 members, suggested members tonight. It was also in the application process the, the notion of the board direct appointing individuals and also selecting from the application, the applicant pool. And so what you see here is the desired qualifications and limitations. You see the major responsibilities of the committee, which is, as I said, to monitor progress of the, the bond program, including construction projects and budgets, report at least annually to the school board on the progress of the bond program, and provide recommendations for the use of the bond funds in accordance with state law and language and the voter-approved ballot title. The proposed membership is as follows. Members appointed for the duration of the bond, we have Lisa Harnish, Nancy McMorris, Odyx, and Mark Shipman as suggested co-chairs, and also Adriana Miranda, who's a co-chair of the Boundary Task Force as well, Danielle Bethel, CEO of Kaiser Chamber Commerce, and Nick Williams, CEO of Salem Chamber of Commerce. And then members from the application pool, you can see those individuals as well. You can see the backgrounds that they bring on the fiscal side, the government budgeting side, construction management experience as well. We have legal experience, multicultural experience, and also experience with implementing equity work as well from a member. So two members on the proposed CBOC are also members on the Boundary Review Task Force, Adriana Miranda and Megan Jensen. And so these meetings haven't been scheduled yet. We're looking at potentially late October, early November, and they would be quarterly thereafter, or more frequently if the board wishes that, or if the board or superintendent requires more updates. Director Hyen will serve as a liaison to the school board, and we have the 12 members for you to consider. And we also took a look at, even though it wasn't a requirement of the application process, feeder representation as well. So we think we've done a fairly good job of at least having representation from most of the feeders as well. So we have this in front of you for your review and approval tonight. We also will be including a student, a rotating student from the Student Equity Committee as well, and we'll also be reaching out to the Student Equity Committee more frequently than just the CBOC quarterly meetings as well, both for the bond program but also for the boundary review process. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Superintendent Perry, do you have anything on an overview for that?
No, I do not have anything.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
So, Mike, if, I, I just have a question. I'm looking through the applications, and not all the folks obviously who applied got a seat on the CBOC, but some of the applications said, would you be interested in serving on the Boundary Committee? And then I go to look at the Boundary Committee process. So some of the folks that even checked both, we weren't able to find a seat for them either on the Boundary Committee or the CBOC, is that correct?
Some, but not many.
Not many?
Not many.
I mean, I, I know we've got to limit it. I mean, I, I understand that, but I just wanted to make sure we, we at least looked at all of them and tried to give them an opportunity to volunteer on, on these two committees that are going to be pretty important.
We, we did, and the CBOC is a much more limited committee than the task force, and we'll be getting into that a little later this evening, but it's a much larger committee, and you'll have a chance to take a look at that membership as well.
Thanks.
Director Kylo?
My question, I think I've answered, is that the zone that's missing is north from the representation, is that correct?
Actually, I think it was, so the interesting part is...
I see a lot from south.
Well, so we're looking at, actually, there's a couple from Sprague, and we do have an individual from north. It's McKay that was, actually, we were missing actual representation there, but it's interesting because on some of the applications, the applicant would mark that they live in a particular feeder system, but their student attends a high school or a school outside of that feeder system. So again, it wasn't a requirement for the application process to be on CBOC to have representation from each feeder system, but we thought we'd sort of show you that, and you're right, but we don't have...
North or McKay?
Yeah. Well, we do have North. Megan Jensen, we've listed her as north.
Okay, because her application isn't here, so that's why I don't...
Oh.
Oh, it is on, Megan Jensen's is one of the applications in mine, and if it isn't, I don't know, the page got, is missing in...
I don't have her.
But, but again, if you look at the board plate and you see desired qualifications and limitations, what we're looking there was obviously broad representation across the community, and specifically an expertise in desired fields like construction, finance, planning, budgeting, management of capital projects, public agencies, community relations and such. So, yeah, we weren't able to hit every one of the criteria, but we feel like we've got a reasonable representation for you.
Director, Marty Hyen?
So since McKay is my high school, I will do my best to represent them as their, you know, their school, as well as being a director.
Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you.
Will anyone entertain a motion?
Is there a quick comment? Oh. So I appreciate the thoroughness of this. I had looked over all of these when we were doing our agenda planning, and I appreciate you have a, a broad, a broad depth of folks, including you've got both contract experience, but you've got budgeting experience, you've got a lot of fiscal experience, and I think with regards to oversight of how the bond dollars are being used, we're not looking for these folks to, to tell you how to manage the projects. We want some, a little bit of fiscal oversight maybe, how are we doing on the, the spending, and how's the progress, and things like that. So I think based on what we probably would expect from this group, this is a really great representation of those skill sets, so thank you. I know it wasn't easy to pull all this together.
Thank you. We had great applications, by the way. You've, you've seen them all, so it was well-attended as far as applications.
So I would move...
Any other?
I'm sorry, I'd move acceptance of the appointment of the Community Bond Oversight Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
The Bond Oversight Committee was proposed, or first by Director Sharon, and second by Director...
It's Jessie.
Jessie, thank you. I really do know that.
That's good, that's good.
Is there any more discussion? Seeing, seeing no more discussion, will ask for the question. All those in favor signify by raising, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Will now move on. Does anyone wish to pull an item from the consent calendar?
If not, Madam Chair, I'd move adoption of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Been adopted by Jim Green, given a second by Director Kylo. All in favor? Marty?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we have a very large amount of grants this time, about $22 million. I don't know if we ever had that much in one month before. Quite a big deal.
Yeah, there's a lot of federal grants this time.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out to everybody.
Thank you, Director Hyen. We've already had a motion. So all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
If I say aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Director. Jessie? Okay, we have no measures pulled under the consent calendar. We have no readings this evening. Now start our report session.
All right, our first report on executive limitation number five, staff compensation and professional development, and I'll walk through kind of some highlights here. First of all, in changing his or her own compensation benefits, we have a couple checks and balances on the system for my compensation that are outlined under evidence of compliance. Number two is promise or imply employment to any person in a matter that is outside the district's established process or statutory requirements. And Director Kylo alerted me just a couple of minutes before the meeting that he believes in a recent hire, we've actually violated this executive limitation. So what I'd like to do with that is I'd like to take that hiring process to our board leadership to see if they have some agreement around it's a violation or not, and then I'll take it, bring it back, and we'll give you an answer, yes or no to that. The hiring in question was reviewed by our legal counsel. So the next item is, let's see, most of the other things are fairly standard, and I wanted to highlight in the failed to develop and implement compensation and professional development plans to attract and retain highly qualified staff. Final section there, we are continuing our university partnership work through a Teach Oregon grant, and this is year one of a three-year clinical research project with our partner universities focusing on outcomes of the clinical model for student teachers. This is really important recruitment strategy for us and to be, to ensure that we're getting the best teachers in our classrooms coming out of our universities. So, and I want to highlight publicly our three partner universities, which are Corbin, Western, and Pacific, who partnered with us not only on this, but also on all of our pathway programs. So the other highlight in this section is our diversity pathway programs that we've been implementing because of your highlighting in the budget process and providing some dollars towards that, that those continue to yield us quality teachers for our classrooms and is part of a really important retention, or recruitment strategy for us. Then the only pending or updated executive limitation is, I just wanted to update you that we have updated our child abuse reporting training, and it has been modified to align with the AG's opinion, which was issued on September 11th, 2018. Unfortunately, we started all our mandatory trainings at the end of August, and we have, so we had to modify that midstream. So with that, I'll entertain questions.
Director Kylo?
I do not question the legality of your action in number two. I question whether it violates the executive limitation when a promise was offered to temporary...
When, when, thank you. When an offer was made contingent upon the person accepting a job and then being guaranteed a job the following year, I believe that then implies that they have been given employment, and I don't believe any other administrator or staff person, to my knowledge, has ever been, had that same offer. But that's my concern. So I will be voting no on this, and you don't need to bother the, that's my point. You don't need to bother the board leadership, or even check with Paul again, because I believe that was, that's a violation of this.
So I guess a response to that, if you're bringing something like that to our attention, I'd like to take a look at it, so I think, take a look at it, if you're raising a concern.
Are you on the Boundary Task Force?
Oh, yeah, yep. All right, next item on the agenda is the Boundary Task Force report, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to...
I think we may have skipped one there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think Lillian has a...
Yeah, Lillian's next.
PowerPoint all fired up and ready to go.
You know, it's Lillian's birthday tonight, today. So there, how's that? We're going to turn over Strategic Plan Number Eight, Enhance and Expand Internal Communication Processes.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry, for that.
You're welcome.
So, so I'm here to talk about the work that we've done around improving and expanding our internal communications. I love, here's a ton of words on a slide, I'm not going to read them to you. The message of this from Forbes Magazine is essentially that our employees can't, can't be set up for success if we don't give them all of the information that they need to know the direction that the district is going. And so that's been a real focus since I got here just a little over a year ago, in conjunction with the work that we're doing around external communications. Of course, you're seeing our newsletters, our board notifications, our press releases, our media pitching. Just this week, we had PBS NewsHour here doing a story that's going to come out later this month. We also had Good Morning America here covering, and in a couple weeks, we're going to have HBO here doing some work for a documentary. So we're really excited about the attention that we're getting nationally, but it doesn't quite mean anything if we're not engaging our employees in that same messaging. So when I arrived, we kind of took a look at what our strategies or what our tactics were to communicate with our employees, and a lot of it was focused on using the Intranet inside 24J as that primary tool. Of course, with the Intranet, the onus is on the employee to go to the site, to find the information, to get it, collect it, bring it back. And what we're hearing, especially from our union leaders, is that folks don't have, don't really have time for emails, let alone going to get information in a place where it's kind of a repository. We had limited data on its effectiveness, clicks, traffic, all of that. We also have a lot of employees, bus drivers, mechanics, custodians, they don't have access to computers on a regular basis. So we, we are missing a, a good chunk of our employees, particularly bus drivers, who are that first point of contact and last point of contact every single day, and they set the tone for a child's educational experience. So the other piece of this is that that just takes a, a significant effort to maintain up-to-date information, and you weren't sure you're getting that return on investment. We also had monthly meetings with licensed and classified employees and quarterly leadership meetings. That's great. People want to hear from Christie, they want to hear from the leadership, and they want to hear from someone that they trust. However, that really puts the message to be disseminated through word of mouth, and certainly any game of telephone will teach you that maybe the message gets diluted in that. So we want to really try to empower employees to have information and, and be that person, whether they're in the grocery store, they're, they are an ambassador of our organization, whether it's in their faith, faith community, or in their day-to-day work. Maybe they're just interacting with someone who hasn't had a chance to read their email yet. So we launched our digital e-newsletter, The Insider, in fall of 2017. This complements information that's posted on our Intranet. In case people got into that routine, that's where they like to go. We're putting it in two places, it's duplicated. We have almost 8,000 internal recipients. Student teachers, substitute teachers are on that list as well, so we make sure that people, even if their interactions with us aren't on a regular basis, they're still getting their news from us. Our open rate is just... Our open rate is just a little bit above the industry average, and we're continuing to look at ways to make sure that we're putting information in there that is relevant. This employee newsletter goes out every two weeks. Of course, our board members also get the external newsletter that goes out every Monday. This goes out every other Wednesday. And so some of the content is the same, but some of the content's really different to focus on news that employees need to know. Also, you may be aware that we've launched our employee news video. We are excited to have an illustrious host, co-host coming up soon with Board Director Paul Kylo, joining Aaron Herod to co-host that. We intentionally seek out employees and board directors to be co-hosts of that, because we know, just like in the newspaper, you're more inclined to read it if there's a name that you recognize. So having co-hosts who are from schools or different departments helps us reach segments of the population within our district who may not otherwise tune in, because they're seeing that face and they want to see their friend on TV, and it's just another way to kind of really lift spirits. We track views on that, on our platform. We usually average more than 300 views, that's great. Now, of course, I'll tell you a little bit more about tactics that we're going to add moving forward, but that doesn't, that doesn't account for folks, I know the Office of Safety and Security and Risk Management, they have a group viewing of the employee news on a regular basis, because it's so funny sometimes, mostly, when I don't get in the way of Aaron's jokes, it's pretty funny. So they all get together and watch it at the same time. So obviously, we don't have that metrics, but, you know, anecdotally, it's a wonderful experience that an office gets together and watches the news together on a regular basis and has that camaraderie. So the next step for that is to create a district programming station, so that we can place those monitors in locations where employees don't have access to, to, to their own computers. That way, if there are literacy obstacles, maybe it's a language barrier, we're helping to work around those and make sure that people are getting their news about the district from the district. The other big piece that we've launched this year that's been incredibly effective is, are those toolkits. And we do those with talking points, employee messaging, newsletter information, social media content, and we do that for critical moments, like you may remember the student-led walkouts last year. We wanted to be sure that everyone was on the same page and all of our employees had the same approach to this, so that nobody was exposed for potential liability, you know, breaking one's constitutional rights. So we wanted to be sure to put these supports in place so that our educators could continue to focus on student learning. We also do these for crisis communications. When we have a major event, we help support principals and school leadership with the messaging for their families, so that way they can again focus on those children. You know, those events happen so quickly, and there's so much going on, and phones ringing, and people arriving, that it just lifts that responsibility. It helps them, of course, they can fine-tune the messaging however they wish, but it helps them make sure that their employees know what has happened, and that they're getting all the information that they need, also that we don't compromise any sort of investigation that may be going on. We also use these toolkits for proactive communications, the bond, the attendance campaign, certainly around the bond measure. Those toolkits and the work that our schools did was one of, if not the most effective tactic in getting information about, out about the bond and how it would impact each parent's school in the district. And then employees also knew that if the bond were to pass, here are the ways that their school landscape would change and how it would impact their jobs. We want to, like we shared during the work session, ensure that all of our communications are inside-out, and so that our employees hear the information from leaders that they trust. We've also formed the Internal Communications Task Force, or you can say ICTF if you want to sound super serious and legit. So the ICTF meets quarterly, and they ensure that our employees are leading the communications trajectory. They ideate on additional tactics, they came up with the monitors idea, and they also operationalize the communications flows so that we continue to make sure that everything is going from the inside-out. So our next steps, this was really cool, this week we had our, our communicator meetings with our classified employees this week, and for the first time ever, we, we livestreamed that. So employees didn't have to leave their workplace, they could not go to North Salem High School, they could tune in, even if they're not a member of that committee, they could still tune in through our Intranet, watch it, hear the questions that were asked, and be a part of that, so that there are no secrets, it's a completely open process. We're working on purchasing those monitors for those work locations, creating the IT infrastructure to project the messaging. We're trying to get some programming so that we can also run our social media feed on those monitors at the same time. So that way, as crises come, et cetera, that all is populated through our Twitter feed, and it will be right there in our employee workplaces. And then we're going to continue to develop toolkits for important conversations and analyze that data to identify areas for improvement. And so with that, that gives you an update on where we've come in 13 months, and kind of an idea where we're going to continue to go for the, for the next school year. Do you have any questions?
Any board questions?
This is an easy one. And I'm sorry if you mentioned it, have you gotten feedback? Did you say you did a survey, or you've gotten feedback on the changes in internal communication?
We, we seek feedback on a regular basis, however, that can again be difficult, so we really focus on the analytics of, to determine the success rate of the tactics that we're using. But, you know, you also have your qualitative and your quantitative research, and qualitative, we got an email today from a school-based employee who, all of her colleagues were out sick, and she was manning all of these processes and couldn't come to the communicators' meeting, and she was so grateful that she could sit at her desk and continue to do her work and still be clued in and not miss anything in that meeting, because it meant a lot to her.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Discussion? Thank you very much, Lillian. Superintendent Perry?
All right, the next report is the Boundary Review Task Force report, and Chief Operations Officer Mike Wolf will give you a quick report on the Boundary Review Task Force.
Right, I got the quick part.
Did you?
So in your, yeah, in your packet, you've got a list of all of the members of the task force. Just want to give you some quick highlights, 45 members represent all feeder systems at every level. With over 60 individuals were personally contacted, and we have 45, not everyone obviously could make the commitment, because it's quite a commitment. I'll show you the last page of, of your packet, has the, the meeting schedule. Efforts were made to focus membership primarily on the feeder systems with the most potential changes, and so that's, we want to make sure that that's where the representation lies, but you can see that it's across the board in every feeder system. We also have Directors Kylo and Green, and we have a team of 12 staff members as resources, and our consultant flow analytics. If you are, turn to the last page of your packet, information item 10B, you'll see the schedule, you'll see that we've already conducted two meetings. The first meeting was the kickoff meeting, you can see the agenda basically of that meeting. I would call your attention to the community surveys. As part of flow analytics process, there was a community survey that was conducted in Spanish and English, targeted in the areas where we knew that there would be potentially the most impact in changes. And I want to highlight two things that came out of that survey that are really important for the Boundary Task Force. The number one issue of concern for our parents and legal guardians was that, to maintain neighborhood schools. So that's really important as the Boundary Task Force goes through its work. The other one was that they're very concerned to make sure that students with special needs stay within their feeder system and graduate in their home high school. And so those are really important aspects. We also have binders for each member. We can present those to you and go over them really quick tonight after the meeting, if you'd like, or at some other time. And then the second meeting was the introduction of the springboard proposal, which we've been working as an internal staff team for several months with flow analytics, and really came through about 10 iterations of using the guiding principles and the equity focus, so that when we brought the task force together, we didn't bring 45 people together with a blank sheet of paper and markers to start moving boundaries. I mean, there is a proposal, the springboard, as a starting place, a springboard for the work. And then we broke into our three initial work groups, McNary and West as one group, McKay and North as another, and Sprague and South as the third. And so that is about as brief as I can be on this topic tonight. Any questions?
Board, any questions? Paul?
Comment. It's, the process has gone very well. It's been, it's been, gone smoothly, and the, the cross-representation has been very nice.
Thank you.
So, having been to all of the meetings now, all two.
And the food's not too bad.
I, never, it's always great.
Okay, good.
Just one quick comment on it. Sharon? The website is fantastic. I was telling Lillian that earlier on this, there is so much information out there, but it's not overwhelming, it's easy to navigate, and you can go in, you can see the agendas of the committees, you can see what was discussed, you can see the maps, there's a lot of really, really great, easy to understand information, so thank you to communications and everybody who's put that together to keep the community aware.
That's great, and that's Lillian and Karma Kraus as part of the team, she's doing a great job.
I want to concur with Director Kylo, I was able to be at one of those meetings, and I was amazed at the amount of people that had turned out for that and that were anxious to help. And it can sometimes be a little contentious, but it wasn't at all, people were really pleasant and anxious to help, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Right, thanks.
The first item under information is the board meeting schedule. It's in the back of your packet, I believe. And the next meeting will be a work session October 23rd, and the next information item is schedule of the Boundary Review Task Force, so that will come along then. Public comment, this portion of public comment is for non-agenda and agenda items, but we Barbara Sellar Young, you're the first person there, if you'll come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and tell us if you represent a particular organization, your residence in the topic.
Well, I'm a proud resident of Salem, Oregon, as of two years ago, so I'm relatively new here. I represent the League of Women Voters of Marion and Polk Counties. Two years ago, I should say one year ago, we were looking around and thinking about how we could add to what we were already doing in terms of serving the community in the area of voting, knowledge about the issues at hand, and came to the conclusion that one of the things that we needed to do as a league was to reach out to the younger members of the communities, both in Marion and Polk Counties. And so we decided to do a essay contest every year, and this year, we're doing it on civil discourse. It is aimed at senior students, and I'm here primarily to, to get the word out, to make sure that everybody everywhere knows that we're doing this. I've contacted all the social studies teachers at all the high schools to let them know about it, and sent them emails, and sent them flyers, but my primary purpose is just to let you know about it, in case you know of a senior who might like to enter the contest. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have, but that's, that's the nuts and bolts of it.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you're doing, we appreciate that. Ann Olivia Palazzo Angulo, you are next. Our rules have changed a little bit, Ann Olivia, so if you'll introduce yourself and the topic, and you're limited to three minutes, as we have done before, and for those waiting for the noise, we don't have any noise now.
Okay.
We only have the clock, and it will flash in three minutes.
Okay.
Our apologies. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. And I do want to state my name is Ann Olivia Palazzo Angulo, and I live at 3644 31st Avenue Northeast, 97301. And I am going to ask your leave tonight to talk a little bit longer than three minutes, because I'd like to represent the voices of thousands of people that aren't able to speak. And it won't be too long, but I know it's going to go over a little, over three minutes, if I might just warn you of that, and ask your leave. But good evening, co-chairs, Gus, Ann Blassey, and Superintendent Perry, and members of the school board. I first want to thank Kathy and Sharon for coming to the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality to meet with parents and staff last night, and have them be able to share some of their stories with you, and everyone really, really appreciated that, and we really appreciated your letter today. I want to give voice to many thousands of voiceless parents here tonight, so I'm coming to you tonight in response to last month's board meeting, during which the board declined to take a stand against Measure 105 that overturns the state law, just to remind people that prohibits local and state officers of the law and forces to, prohibits officers of the law to comply with federal immigration officers, and instead forces our, all of our local officers to comply with federal immigration officers. And I came tonight to respond to your silence. Our community, your community, of Latino neighbors make up nearly 25% of our cities, and nearly 40% of our school student body. That is 16,500 K through 12 students, in addition, 50% of Salem's 10,000-plus babies and preschoolers are Latino. Compare these numbers to Portland's, the largest city and school district in the state of Oregon, where Latinos make up less than 10% of the city, and 7,600 K through 12 students, less than half of Salem and Kaiser. And there are 640,000 residents in Portland, the population, and we have, as you know, with Salem and Kaiser combined, about 210 or 20. We want to collectively let you know how much it hurt us all last month, at last month's school board meeting. As our elected school board members, your number one priority is our 42,000 students, all of them. As our elected representatives of our children, we have no interest in your political leanings in any subject other than the education of all of our children, and we must know that our school board members are safe people. You are the representatives of our children sworn to act only in the interest of our children, who by U.S. Supreme Court decision are compelled to attend school and have the right to an equal education regardless of their legal status. The thought that one of you would seek to harm or scare a single one of our children is beyond imagination. Your position on this board is collective, your name is not important, your personal beliefs and values about politics, religion, nationalism, liberalism, conservatism, and any other ism is not relevant to your number one responsibility, educating our children and keeping them safe. We need you to know us, to understand us, us and our children, all 21,000 of them, from age zero to 18. According to research, over 95% of the Latino children you represent are citizens of this fine city, state, and nation, and according to research, three in four of the Latino children you represent have a family member in danger of deportation, and therefore they live with fear.
And I'll have to hurry and finish this.
I'll hurry really fast, okay?
Thank you.
Due to a long history of immigration law, or immigration snafus and contradictions of every imaginable type, beginning before any of you were born, the issue of immigration law is so complicated that anyone representing children who is not an expert in law poli- law is so complicated that anyone representing children who is not an expert in law, politics, and history should not have a lot to say about the matter to the children or their And we want to say that you don't have a right to frighten our children or their families. And I know you don't want to, but I need you to know that you did, in any way, to do anything that would make them feel unsafe to attend school. We expected better of you. Portland's school board passed the resolution as a school board body, not as individuals, and representing far fewer students, and many other small districts also did, as well as cities. Your refusal to do this due diligence to support our children and assure them their, your commitment to their safety, security, and peace of mind was shameful. Please think about the impact of your silence. Your silence sent a chilling message that scared many thousands of your students and families. Your silence said it is not important to each of us what our children and their families suffer. Your silence, according to research, impacted the academic performance of thousands of students, because children in fear cannot learn.
Ann Olivia, you have, you have to finish.
Last paragraph, last paragraph, I promise. We expect you to rethink this message and send a new message assuring our students and their families that their safety, security, and education is your number-one priority and concern. The sooner the better. They urgently need to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann Olivia.
Can I have a copy?
And we do share, share your heartfelt concerns.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We need a board activity report, so if you've been out in the community any of this, this last couple of weeks. Jim?
So a couple of things I'd report on, Madam Chair. One, I had the opportunity through my work, not on the dime of the school district, to attend a national conference on equity and the Council of Urban Boards of Education. And it was really enlightening, because it was focused on equity and what school districts across the nation are doing with regard to equity. And it was interesting to see our student up here earlier tonight, because the person who kicked off our conference was a girl by the name of Sadie Paulson. She has cerebral palsy, and she is a film editor due to technology that the district was able to get her. She, it's a pretty amazing story, and a lot of the, the technology that you saw the student use tonight, she has available to her, so that she can be voice-activated. Her computer is head-generated, so that she can speak. But she edits and directs films as a cerebral palsy student. But the other thing that was there was a long conversation about implicit bias and what it means, and that everybody has it, and that's not wrong, but how do we deal with it is the real trick. And that's something that we probably need to continue our work on here in Salem-Kaiser. But from that conference, I walked away talking to several school district administrators and school board members, in that Salem-Kaiser's doing the right work, using our equity lens, creating the equity lens, answering those questions. And what they encouraged us to do is to make sure we don't see it as a step or a barrier, but an important process in engaging our community. And I think we are, you know, Mike's been doing that with regard to the Boundary and the CBOC. We just need to continue our work in that area. And I would encourage us, in the future, to do some work on implicit bias and what it means to students, community members, staff. Although we're doing the right work, we just need to remain dedicated to it. And it was a great conference. Hopefully, in the future, the Council of Urban Boards of Education will move the conference a little closer, so the cost isn't so high. But my association covered the cost for me to go. It was a great conference. We're doing the right work. The only concern that they had was that, looking at our student population, they looked at our school board and said, "You don't look like your students." And that's something we need to work on as a community, to assure that we're representing our community across this district. The last event I attended was a great event. I hope I never have to attend one again, though. Sunday, I attended the event at Sprague High School for the two students who've committed suicide up there. And, excuse me, it was a tough event, but a great event that brought the community together. And Sprague has had a really tough year. And my son attends there, I'm a graduate of there, and that's my board seat. So it's been a tough year. I hope everybody in the community understands that. One of the things I want to take away from that, and I've talked to the superintendent about, is that we focus on these issues now, and I think it's great that we have the hands, the words, and hands are not for hurting resolution, because it ties in so nicely with that, that we really need to focus on what we do as a community and what we do as a school district with regard to these issues. We have counselors in our schools. No offense to them, they're primarily focused on academics. We really need to look at our mental health and wraparound services for these students. You can always ask why, and you never get the answer. But one of the things we know we need to do is look at our resources and how we allocate them, to assure that if students find themselves in these situations, we as adults and we as people who are in their everyday lives, ask the right questions, make the right notifications. And so I've asked that the superintendent work with board leadership on a boardwork session, on what we're doing currently in the school district with regard to community resources, what we're doing as a school district, and what we can do in the future. One of the things, since this will be my last year on the Budget Committee, I'm going to be focused on taking a look at our resources, to see if there's a way, within a billion-dollar budget, we can allocate some resources to address this issue. Because even a small investment of between $200,000 and $400,000 can make a huge difference in the lives of these kids. We've lost too many kids. One is too many, and two, in two weeks at a high school, is devastating. I would say that our principal up there at the event on Sunday, it was unplanned, it was planned by parents, we were able to circle the entire school. Craig did a great job. For somebody who was thrown into a room with 700 people, parents, students, community members, wondering what's going on up at Sprague, Craig Swanson, our principal up there, did a great job. The Browns, whose son was one of the, one of the students, they're both teachers here in the district. So it's been a very tough week up at Sprague and in our community, and I just want to make sure that we work towards these things, and that as we build our budget, we take a look at trying to address the needs of our students in this district. And I apologize, it's just been a tough week.
I'd like to follow up on what Jim's had to say. I'm fortunate to have a doctor's degree, and my thesis was adolescent suicide. So I've worked with lots of people, lots of kids, and I'm aware of the problems that cause this. Another thing that is common is cluster suicides, and that's something we have to be very careful of. If I had my choice, I would like us to spend some of that money on having a professional that specializes in suicide come into our district. I'd like to see him write some lessons, write some things that teachers can follow. It's very true that you sometimes cannot identify that that is coming at all, but it's extremely important to our staff and our district as a whole to offer the help in each individual school, to identify, at least when there is our signs, that we have a child in trouble along that line. We need to pick it up, and it's just essential. Are there any other comments? Thank you. Let's go on. Jim, have you, or Jesse, have you been anyplace this week you'd like to talk about?
Yeah, yes, I have. On, I don't remember the days. I went and saw our Family Literacy Center. I got a opportunity to sit down with some of our teen moms, who are trying to get their, on their way to get their GED, and just sat there. We had a conversation. We talked a lot about what they see, some of their fears, some of their worries that they have, as well as some of their hopes, some of the things that they love. And so it was, it was a really great learning experience for me, and I hope it was for them as well. But I just had a great time listening and hearing what they had to say. I also had the chance to go with Eric. We went to our Boys and Girls Club, CTP Center. I met Scott just yesterday. It was, it was a blast. That kid has a, he's a great, he's a great mind. And it's great to see a lot of our other students there who are, who are working, and they're learning job skills and life skills. And it's, it's a great thing to see, especially because you can see their eyes light up, and you see the hope in it, and I think that's fantastic. I, I didn't get the, I didn't have the opportunity, I didn't, I didn't make it to the, the Sunday thing with, with Sprague, but I just want to say that, for, I, I, from what I heard, there were like over 1,000 people there. There was a ton of people there, and I think that's so awesome that people were able to come together. I just also feel that it's very important for, for those of us who, who weren't able to make it, to send your thoughts and your prayers out to the families and the students who, those kids' friends, their parents, their brothers, their sisters, as well as those students who are having thoughts like that, or whose, whose minds are wandering towards that, that we keep them in our minds, and we, and we take the time to reach out to people who, just because you never know. You never know, so just taking the time to be kind to people who are around you.
Are there other reports, people that want to discuss what they've done? Paul?
I went to the religious leaders' meeting with Jim Orth, representing the district, and we got to hear the Walker Middle School Choir perform a cappella for us, which was very, very nice.
Anyone else? Sharon?
Just real quick, Olivia mentioned that Kathy and I met with the Salem-Kaiser Coalition on, for equality, and had a, a very insightful conversation, and they asked us a lot of great, really tough questions, and I know Kathy and I both appreciated that. But something that Jim just said caught my attention, and Jim, you mentioned that our school board doesn't reflect our, our student population, but one of the things we talked about last night is also even our Budget Committee. And we have an opportunity coming up here pretty soon, because we have applications out for our Budget Committee, and, and it's a great starting place, even if you're considering the school board, or just getting more active in the community. But I know last year, we had, you know, we had some applications of qualified individuals, you know, diverse, that were diverse, and so I hope that we take a closer look this year. We talk a lot about an equity lens and equity, and sometimes that takes specific action on our part. And so I appreciate that you, you made that comment, and we do have an opportunity coming up here very soon to, to apply a little more equity to our school district through our Budget Committee. So thank you.
So it was a real honor to be invited, to speak with the Coalition for Equality and some of their other cohort organizations. And there's no question, there are some really heartfelt stories there, and it was hard to listen to. So I thank you for inviting us, and we'll see if we can meet more often. And thank you for tonight. Superintendent, do you have?
So I just have one quick thing I want to do. One of the kind of unsung heroes of crises is our Student Crisis Team. Jim, you started this tonight. I'm going to just read the names of the people that have responded, and then tomorrow, I'm going to ask Alice if, oh, gosh, no, we're not going to do this, Jim. Tomorrow, I'm going to ask Alice if she'll send you email with where they're located. Maybe board could send a nice thank you with the email addresses linked. So here they are. Ryan Marshall, Todd Bobita, Andrea Arparazzo, Tracy Isom, Sam Wolkersum, Alex Brink, Jacob Copely, and Kim Morrison, Kelly Ward, Gail Wynden, Jeffrey Peets, Alicia Helbling, Carl Nelson, and Megan Miranda. We're all part of our crisis team, and they've been, unfortunately, had multiple incidences. So we'll get their contact out to you, and if by your zone, you could send them a nice thank you, that's, that's a big deal, and it's hours and hours and long days and heart-wrenching work. So, anyway.
Well, frankly, we're adjourned. I have nothing else to say. Any board members at all? It was a tough week for all of us, and I thank you for your support by coming this evening, and we are now adjourned.